Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I was actually just trying to say what we'll do in a minute or so. Asking the Board, and I think there's some willingness, there's a Board practice, really, to not do even the unofficial business until five members are physically present. Having said that, the Board can decide that, you know, the unofficial bit, I don't want to say unofficial, but the business that isn't going to take action until the afternoon can continue. We have five, by the way, but Cassandra's on the phone. And I think that's more practice than any kind of law, so looking for indulgence of the Board that we proceed that way. Cassandra won't be here for an hour or so, Nancy's not going to be able to make it.
Oh, Nancy's not going to be able to make it at all? Oh, you just heard that?
So would that be appropriate?
Yeah, she'll be here. Cassandra will be here when she gets here, okay.
And she's listening now, so for the audience's purpose, anything that's being presented will be heard by five members, and one's just going to be on the phone. You're still there, Cassandra? Of course not.
We can proceed with our discussion.
There she is.
Cassandra?
I'm back.
Okay, great. So we're going to proceed, and we won't have any votes, obviously, till other Board members here. That wouldn't probably have taken place till this afternoon, anyway. So, good morning.
Good morning.
The time is now 9:53, and a quorum of the Board is kind of present. The State Board of Ed meeting of August 10, 2010, is called to order. First item is approval of agenda and order of priority. Can I have a motion, please?
Tell me.
Approved by Carolyn and supported by John. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you. Introductions. Eileen Hamilton, please.
Good morning. I will start the introductions at the head of the table, and to my immediate left is Mr. Mike Flanagan, Chairman of the State Board and Superintendent of Public Instruction. Next is Mrs. Kathleen Strauss from Detroit, President of the Board. Next is Mr. John Austin from Ann Arbor, Vice President. Next is Mrs. Carolyn Curtin from Evert. She serves as the Board's Secretary. Next is Mrs. Mary Ann Yarid McGuire from Detroit, and she is the Board's Treasurer. Next to Mrs. McGuire is Michael Zeiger, representing Governor Granholm at the Board Table. The empty chair next to Michael is that of Matinda Rigatz. She is the 2010-11 Michigan Teacher of the Year. She is unable to be with us today. She is working on some curriculum development activities up in the Traverse City area. When she's in the classroom, she is a Global Studies Teacher at Grand Ledge High School. Moving across the table, and I feel kind of lonely over here. Cassandra Albrecht. Cassandra's on the telephone, joining us via telephone for about the first hour of the meeting. Next is Reginald Turner from Detroit, and Mr. Turner may join by telephone later today. Next is Mrs. Elizabeth Bauer, and she, too, is unable to join us this morning, but will be on the telephone this afternoon. Mrs. Bauer resides in Birmingham. And the next empty chair is that of Nancy Danhoff. Nancy is the Board's Delegate to the National Association of State Boards in Education. She is unable to join us today, we learned just a few minutes ago, and she resides in East Lansing, Department of Education staff. Sally Vaughn, Chief Academic Officer and Deputy Superintendent. Carol Wallenberg, Deputy Superintendent. Martin Ackley, Director of Communications. Andrea Post, Administrative Aid to the Superintendent. Lisa Hanskineck, Legislative Director. Mary Ann Chartan, Director, Grants Coordination and School Support. Ric Floria, Director of Financial Management. Linda Forward, Interim Director, Education Improvement and Innovation. Flora Jenkins, Director of Professional Preparation, and Joseph Martineau, the Director of Education Assessment and Accountability. Some of our regular attenders here today. Ed Blues is here representing the Association of Independent Colleges and Universities of Michigan. June Tyson is here today representing the Network of Michigan Educators. Bruce Fay from Wayne Risa. Casey Kepkin, Michigan and Middle Cities Education Association. Terrence Lunger, Superintendent Calhoun, ISD. Bob Kepkin, representing the Michigan Association of School Administrators. Pat McNeil, Michigan Association for Curriculum and Staff Development. Judy Pritchett, Macomb Intermediate School District. And Barbara Stark is here from the Michigan Association of Non-Public Schools.
And we have some Dean guests. So maybe Flora will, maybe during your presentation, you'll introduce some of our colleagues from higher ed. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Good. Oh, it's me. Out of practice here. Well, good morning again, and the first item on the agenda. There's a presentation on the report on the academic year 2008-9, Teacher Prep Institution Performance Score. And I think Sally and Flora and Steve are going to join us at the table. And just kind of as a reminder, more than anything to the Board, but something probably new for audience members, in June 2006, this State Board approved criteria for teacher preparation institution performance scores. The Office of Professional Preparation Services staff has gathered the necessary data and applied the criteria that the Board approved producing this report. This item's on the consent agenda later in today's Board meeting. It's to receive the report. There's no, well, that's the action, is receiving it. The next steps, by the way, will be to post information to the web, report results to the U.S. Department of Ed to comply with the Higher Education Act, and provide technical assistance to institutions in the low-performing category. I'll turn it over to Deputy Sally.
Hi there. As you know, the institutions, every year, we go through a process to give them their performance scores, and institutions that are identified as low-performing have two years to improve their performance before further sanctions occur, and those can go as far as actually closing the teacher prep program. This could occur as early as next year, so we're just kind of putting you on alert that that's, we're at that step in the process. We've got institutions identified as at-risk must progress to the satisfactory category within two years or move to the low-performing category. Institutions then have two years from that date to remove the at-risk or the low-performing status without moving to the next lower level. So Flora and Steve are going to walk us through what those performance scores look like for this year. Flora?
Okay, I'm just going to, real briefly, just kind of reiterate what Sally has already said, and thank you very much, Mike, for your nice introduction to this item and giving the history of it. It is important that we do understand that it's a possibility that next year we may be coming to you with recommendation or an institution that may be up for rescinding their approval as a teacher preparation institution or closure of the program, so we do need you to be aware of that. These scores are done and formulated based on the prior year's activities, so we're kind of like a year behind, so what you're getting now is the 2008-9 information, and then next year we will bring you the 9-10 data that we have. We do want to say that those institutions that were identified as at-risk or low-performing last year, we worked with them on the corrective action plan of improvement, the self-assessment. Steve Sedgink, my colleague here, has been working to provide technical assistance to those institutions, and they are making improvements. They have come up with their plans. We do need to note that there was a minor correction on Attachment D in the Board item, the teacher preparation institution's corrective action status. The due date says April 20. That is a typographical error. It should actually be April 30. All of the institutions submitted their plans on time. And Steve can kind of talk to you about that in the six-month report that's due after that. We had one institution that submitted information on what they're doing to improve, and that was Mary Grove. They have improved their test scores. They're up to 80% in their test score, so we do see improvement there. Their completion rate has improved. They got an additional two points in that, so we think that Mary Grove has submitted a very good plan. They're working very hard to improve. They're looking at admissions. They've also added additional staff in their College of Education. They hired a new dean. They've got an institutional researcher, a new program compliance officer, and student services specialist, so they're working very hard. Our other institutions are also putting forth efforts. They're looking at programs that have lower pass rates, content areas that they will be eliminating, so these are some strategies that they're using to improve the program, so that the overall program gets to where we need it to be in the preparation of the teachers, is what we want to see, and get quality teachers into our classrooms.
Flora, may I say, first of all, thank you for acknowledging that. And one thing we did yesterday morning, that leadership team, as we were preparing for today's meeting, was we wanted to, in one sense, be specific that, of course, this could result in an institution losing its ability to do this a year from now. We could recommend to you that that happened, and you could take action along those lines. Having said that, you know, one thing we spent some time on yesterday is, you know, we want to be, we think it's important to be giving credit for improvement. So we think if the trajectory is like this, that that's good, and that we should be valuing that. Having said that, we'd still need to be in a position where we continue to see those improvements, and if we don't, we would make a recommendation. It would be ultimately the Board's decision to not renew. But our thinking, it's a little bit like what we're doing with the so-called lowest 5%. I could draw an analogy. Where the, even though there'd be 100 and some schools on that list, the odds of putting them into a state takeover district, all of them, would be remote, because if we see improvement, we're going to think that's a good sign, and let's give credit. So the philosophy in the Department, really, on both those counts is, improvement counts, don't happen to hit an exact target. It's not like we think those are magical. So appreciate your acknowledging that, Flora, and that's kind of the way we're going to operate.
So, can I ask a question?
Please, yes.
So, will we be giving points for improvement, or how will that work?
We, when we brought the process to you last year, we did not award any points for improvement, but what we think you will see is that if an institution started at one level, say they only ended up with maybe 32 points, but we looked at their teacher preparation, the MTTCs, they don't get any points if they're below 80%. But if they moved, if they were at 71%, and moved up to 80%, but over the three-year, the two-year period, they didn't have enough time to actually get the points yet, because their three-year average isn't at 80%. But we could bring that to you and say, this institution really has improved significantly in these areas that will push them into that satisfactory area. So then it would be up to the Board to take a look at all the data that we have on the institution and make a determination.
So as Flora's saying, it wouldn't be that the points would do it. If the points did it, it would be automatic, we'd be good, but it would be at Board's discretion to say, or in our discretion and a recommendation, say, we think you should acknowledge that.
That's a good idea.
Please.
Okay. So, anyway, I'm going to have Steve kind of walk you or talk about the process that we looked at. You have the scores in front of you, see where the institutions are. We have two institutions that are at-risk this year, and three that are considered low-performing, and two of those were already low-performing from last year, so they are in the second year corrective action, and that would be U of D Mercy and Mary Grove.
Okay, Steve, if you have anything to add?
Maybe at this moment, we could introduce some of those colleagues that we have with us.
Yeah.
We have representatives from Mary Grove College here today. Both the, I think, dean, if that's correct, and I'll give her the opportunity to introduce herself, as well as, I think, the mentor institution, as well as the consultant that's working with Mary Grove. And Jane then can introduce those folks. And we also have members here from University of Detroit Mercy, and give them the opportunity to introduce themselves as well, before I kind of begin my remarks, if that would be all right.
Great.
Jane, go ahead.
I'm Jane Hemming-Dule. I'm Vice President for Academic Affairs at Mary Grove, and glad to be here, and am pleased to introduce my colleague, who I think many people know, Dr. David Hamilton, who is our consultant from Spring Arbor University.
Lori McDonald, University of Detroit Mercy Chair of the Department of Education, newly appointed. And with me is Diane Manica, from our staff at the University of Detroit Mercy.
Okay.
Also, we have Michelle Johnston from Ferris State University, who's representing Michigan Association of Colleges of Teacher Education, and Susan English from Aquinas, right? Aquinas, who represents the PSCT, so.
All right. Just a few brief comments, as Flora mentioned, the institutions, Lake State, Mary Grove, and U of D Mercy are moving into their second year now of their, the status. Attachment D of that July 26, 2010 document is a new piece of information in this report to us. Up until now, the Board has always received the performance scores, and this is the first time now that there's actually been action taken based on the performance scores. So last year in October, the three institutions, Lake State, Mary Grove, and U of D Mercy, were alerted to their corrective action level status due to the performance score, and as a result of this year's performance score, those institutions still retain that particular status for the second year. Based upon the protocol that we have in place, there is a third level, and that's the level which happens after that second year of low-performing status. And it's at that level where some of the mitigating information that we intend to provide with respect to changes in their test performances, et cetera, will be part of the report for next year, and the Board then will be, you know, involved in discussing the resolution of the institution based upon that information. You remember, probably two years ago now, we just discussed this element, and, you know, in the Level 3, we clearly said that the MDE would request current data from the institutions in order to mitigate the numbers that appear in the report. Give the institutions the opportunity to provide statements of strength in their institution. Then, all of that information would be given to the Board for some with recommendation about consideration, and it would be the Board's discretion about the next steps to take. There is not, you know, a necessary timeline that says this, 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 this. We want to be able to have that, I think, ability and sensitivity to make those kind of decisions about these institutions as we move forward. As Flora mentioned, we do have some institutions that now are appearing for the first time in a particular status. For example, Adrian, at-risk, goes into Level 1, is the recommendation. Olivet is currently at low-performing, so it would go into the Level 2. And following this meeting, and the discussions, and acceptance by the Board, then the next step will be for our office, and to prepare for the Superintendent's Office, a letter alerting these new institutions to their existing status or their new status, in the case of Adrian and Olivet. During April of this year, at the DARTAP meeting, which is Directors and Representatives of Teacher Education Programs in Michigan, as well as the Joint MACD, which is the Michigan Association of Colleges of Teacher Education, our office presented the corrective action document, as well as information about, you know, the processes to all the teacher preparation institutions. So they received that level of information, opportunity for questions and answers were taken at that time, and that follows a Board directive to that effect, that we were to do that with the institutions. So we did that in the formal setting. Prior to that time, during July of, or actually, I guess it was September of 2009, we met with Lake State University, Mary Grove, and U of D Mercy, and had a technical assistance discussion at that time with them. I have gone to Mary Grove a number of instances and worked with them on their teacher preparation plan of action. And let me say, just from the work with the three institutions and the corrective action reports which we received, on time, they were complete. There were plans of actions for the institutions to actually do some concrete things to address the concerns, and I have seen those institutions doing that. And as Dr. Jenkins mentioned to you, we did have this statement from Mary Grove, which actually, you know, collaborated some of those visual things with the changes in their scores and the impact they've had. In six months from the April date when we received the first statement, we'll expect to see a report from the institutions about their current impact based upon their corrective actions. So we anticipate that probably at the end of October 2010 this year, we'll get more formal information about the first year's implementation of this corrective action plan. I think that's sufficient.
Yeah.
If you have questions, we can address those.
Thank you. Questions or comments from Board members?
Just a small note, it was brought to my attention that there were a couple of technical fixes in this report relative to the reporting from the schools, meeting the deadline of April 30, not 20.
Right.
Mary Grove, I guess, had some more footnotes that they want to include. Can we make sure that those, is that accurate, Flora?
Yes, and we do have that information. Yeah, with that.
So we've directed to put it into this report?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I heard the same comment this morning, and I, the two, I think you just said them. One would be, Attachment D would be that correction on the due date, and the other would be, as John said, the statement of progress. And then, so when you receive it this afternoon, it would be included.
That would be good. I had a question about, it's on page seven of the report, under periodic, a program review that gets 10 points. It says it'll be periodic review priorities as determined by the Superintendent of Public Construction.
Kathy, we can't hear you.
Periodic review priorities as determined by the Superintendent of Public Construction will be added to this criteria. Is that what you were talking about, this gradual improvement? What is that?
I don't know.
What does that refer to?
It's an asterisk.
Yeah, those.
Under program review, there's an asterisk, and that, the asterisk describes it as periodic review priorities as determined by the Superintendent of Public Construction.
Right, those are.
And what those would be that would be different from what we already have?
It would be if, for instance, if Superintendent Flanagan wanted us to take a look at mathematics programs, and say, let's take a look at those programs across the institutions and see how they're doing. Or if we put a priority on technology. You know, we could say, that's the priority that will do the periodic, or kind of take a really close look at that. And we've had some focus groups on areas such as technology, or it could be special education, but, you know, we just have not really pursued that yet because we're doing all of these other things. So it is, if the Superintendent and the Board could make recommendations, the Superintendent say, well, we'd like for you to really take a focus on this priority this year, and Steve can probably add to that, too.
In terms of background, all programs get initial review and approval. So if an institution wants to do a new biology program, it aligns its program to State Board standards. It gets initial review there. Historically, in addition to the initial review, we've also had a five- or seven-year periodic review, which was also handled by our office. And it's that piece of the periodic review that is undergoing some adjustment. Because of the move now to national accreditation requirement to all the teacher preparation institutions in Michigan, the periodic review is woven into that accreditation process. So if, at the discretion of the Superintendent or the Board, there would be an initial, or excuse me, a specific requirement to look at a program that is not in its initial review phase, that's where this asterisk comes into play.
So it could be by the Superintendent or, and/or the Board?
Absolutely. Because the reason I didn't recognize this right away is, would that be on the points report, or would that be in the seven-year?
Well, when we, it would be a part of, like, the seven-year, it could be, it wouldn't be points. They wouldn't actually be getting points, but we'd just be taking a look to see, are they meeting the standards that we've set for these priorities in a real sense? Just really taking a closer look at that particular priority.
So in other words, we have to determine the denominator. If, for example, it was determined that all math programs needed to be reviewed based upon current State Board standards, and one or two institutions did not do that, then they wouldn't get credit in this factor for completing the review in a timely or appropriate manner.
And I think the way we, you know, this wasn't yesterday, this was a while back.
Yeah, this has been a long time ago.
When we talked about that conceptually, this would be something that all would have advice of in advance, including the Board, and I think it is appropriate to add the Superintendent or Board, and/or Board, because it could be that the Board has an initiative that they'd like reviewed. But for now, it's not related to the points in this report.
No. I don't think that's quite clear here.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I think it could be clarified before we vote on it, if you could, during lunch or something.
Yeah.
Well, that's the process, so what we'll have to do is go back and look at the whole. We won't be able to do that by this afternoon. If we need to go back and read this with them.
And instead, it would be added to this criterion. We haven't really added it yet, so.
I think, I think that's a good suggestion. We could just leave that out for this report.
Okay.
Since it's not relevant to this report, anyway. And then when we have the process worked out, as Sally's saying, we'll be sure that, not only the Board, but that the institutions see and understand that. And we have talked conceptually about this, because this, here's, well, you've already mentioned some examples, so I won't repeat them. This had to do, this started a little bit, if I'm recalling, with Liz's interest, as well as many others, at this table, but in technology, and are our kids really prepared when they start out as teachers to really incorporate it into their instruction. So that's an example of something that could be a further goal, almost, at some point, but that's something to be in the future. So for now, we'll just take that asterisk out and receive the report without it. Other questions or comments for the Board? Okay, so, thank you very much. The receiving will be this afternoon. It'll be with the two amendments that John mentioned, and.
And this one.
And this one. Three amendments. Thank you. And I think you're still up here, right?
Yes, we'll be here for a while.
This is Flora's morning. She's going to be there all morning, I think.
And this is presentation on denial of Adrian College's appeal of its 2008-9 teacher prep performance score. They, you know, by definition of the title of this item, they've appealed that. It addressed three elements, the high-need endorsements, diversity, and Michigan tests for teacher certification scores, along with requests for additional points, and Sally.
So the PSCT, the Professional Standards Commission for Teachers, was given an opportunity to review Adrian's appeal, and they recommended that the score be increased from 53 to 53. However, even with those additional points, Adrian's performance continues to be at the at-risk category. Flora, do you want to?
Yeah. Adrian did submit, and I think you have copies of that information that you've seen, and they did their analysis on why the rationale, why their score should be changed. And again, we presented all of this information to the PSCT, and Steve really did a good job of walking through each one of those requests that they had for changes. The first one is that they wanted to have their endorsements changed because of the high-needs endorsements. They wanted to change the scores by three points. That was denied by the PSCT. The second element was on the diversity score. They felt that they are a small institution, and provided some rationale for why they should get the additional two points on that, and the PSCT membership agreed and thought that they should get the additional two points in the diversity element. The third element presented was the MTTC. They were requesting an additional five-to-10-point adjustment be made, and it just, the PSCT did not agree with this. The statistical rationale, we'd have to take another look at. We didn't feel, you know, as staff, didn't feel that it really was statistically sound to give them those additional points. We could have had any institution come in with those kinds of requests. So at this point, even raising their score from 53 to 55, they still would be in the at-risk category. And so it's recommended that the appeal. And so, it's recommended that the appeal be denied and that they remain in the at-risk category. And I'll see if you had any additional information. No, I think that's basically it in a nutshell.
Mike?
And the action on that would be?
The action would be that they would deny it.
Right, but I mean, that takes place.
Yeah, later on.
Any questions or comments from board members? Mary Ann, please.
Is that, to invite the PSCT to look this over, is that the usual form on appeal?
Yeah, that is what we had, we have been doing. We said we would take appeals to the PSCT, and the institution had an opportunity to come in and address the PSCT and go through their rationale of why they felt that they should be given the additional points.
And was there a minority report from the PSCT? Or was this a unanimous decision?
Well, they take everything to a vote. So, it was a unanimous majority vote.
Okay. I, um. I guess we all have a concern that all schools are serving their students well. And yet, we want what's fair for the school itself. Are you convinced that they should be denied on all of these levels? Was that your recommendation to the PSCT?
I did not make a recommendation to the PSCT because it was up to them to hear that. I've discussed this with staff, you know, in terms of, should we, should they be approved? Should the recommendation be approved? And I didn't see any reason why it should.
I mean, is it fair to say, in the spirit of what Mary Ann's asking, that the PSCT certainly has a relationship with the board? We could disagree with, in your recommendation and mine, something that the PSCT recommended. Then the board would be the ultimate sayer of this. In this case, it turned out it didn't matter, because even, in a sense, I mean, respectfully, but even if you accept the points, it doesn't move them out of the status. But I think it's, I think the process is maybe not the best one. This would be interesting to have a discussion on. But the process is to let it work itself out to the PSCT at this point. And then, it's a little bit awkward, frankly, we talked about this yesterday, if we are in disagreement as a staff. So, it's, it's.
But when that could happen, then we have to decide.
Right. Right. That happens all the time, actually, in other forums, too. It's, but, you know, you could have a process, frankly, that's direct PSCT to you. I think, you know, I think the current one's makes more sense.
I'm not quibbling with the form. I just want to make sure that that's standard, that that's what is being followed all the time.
For every year now, we've done it with PSCT, and.
It does, you know, there appear involvement that way. It's, there's some sense to that. And I'm not, we're not uncomfortable with the fact that there may be disagreements at times. And then, that is, Kathy said, that would be for the board to distinguish. Please.
The, Adrian did have an opportunity to appear before the PSCT. And there was a discussion, and they did, and their PSCT recommended changing the one, the one, the points for diversity, but not the other two.
Right, exactly.
Is there, is anybody here from the PSCT who?
A lot of. Susan English is here.
Would you like to come up, Susan?
Maybe they.
Sorry about that. Your question.
Well, I wondered if you could expand a little bit. Sue, if you could expand a little bit on the discussion that the PSCT had, and how come they reached the conclusion that they did?
Certainly. Is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
The discussion we had was very open. I mean, the process is actually a good one, because we're able to really look at the details and have a good discussion with the institutions about what's happening. And, you know, so the process is good. What really came out of it, and I'm probably preempting something that Flora's going to talk about more formally with the board, is that we really want to revisit the score, the TPI factors that go into it. Because as Adrian makes a case in their letter, there's some statistical issues for institutions that are small in terms of what happens when you have two minority students who don't identify, who don't self-identify as minority. Or if you have test scores that vary just because of that cohort that comes through. There's some statistical issues with small institutions. And there are just some new ideas in the industry in terms of research, in terms of how to measure the quality of teacher preparation programs. Michigan, you know, I applied Flora and Steve and the board for the score that we have, because it doesn't just weigh on the MTTC test scores. And some states do, that's all they look at. And we know that that's not a good balanced approach to how to measure the quality of our program on test scores. So, we really applaud that. But we really, as a group, that afternoon, as we talked about Adrian and their score, had some questions and concerns with the score overall. It was a very lengthy discussion. It was a very open discussion. It was very respectful and professional. A difficult process. Part of what I think the staff has to deal with is the reality of the score as it is right now. And in some ways, it's very unfair and inappropriate to make adjustments to the score when all the rest of the institutions are having to live up to that. So, there are other small institutions, too. So, that's part of why the PSCT denied some of the factors, because we have to live with a score the way it is, the scoring formula. Does that, does that help give some other background? Thank you.
You know, if I may, in addition to what Sue's saying, there will be other evolutionary issues related to this. For example, because we got the grant, the data grant, well, at some point in time, we will have, as you know, every student tied into every teacher in terms of their student achievement growth, and ultimately tied into their teacher prep institution. That is obviously going to have to be part of a factor at some point also. It's going to be, our whole system for schools and teachers is based on student achievement growth. And I say this respectfully, but it's the one thing that's not tied back in any of these factors right now. So, I mean, you could find out, for the sake of discussion, that institution X that isn't perceived maybe to be, whatever that means, perceived to be the top institution, is actually producing science teachers that have great gains in student achievement. And you'd be able to measure that based on a million and a half kids and their achievement gains. So, I mean, that brings us to a whole other level. And that's why I think, well, many of these things will have to be revisited at some point. Yes?
And we've had discussions about exactly that. And then, we've had discussions, too, about how can you hold the teacher prep institution accountable for more than three to five years, when once our graduates leave, the district that they're in has more influence over them than, you know, our influence fades over time. But the other piece that we're looking for in terms of data tracking is where our graduates, do they get jobs and are they staying in their jobs? Because for us, that's a measure, we think that's a measure, of the quality of our program. Are we producing teachers who not only can influence student learning gains, student achievement gains, but they'll stick with it? They're staying, they're committed, they're staying in the field, they're getting their jobs. Those principal evaluations are positive, whatever it takes to stay in the field, and they're doing it. So, all those kind of future data systems are really appealing to us.
And that does make sense about the waning influence through no fault of your own, because of district cultures. I mean, we're, frankly, as a bit of an aside, we're concerned about this, that if a year from now, we have, let's say, 10 schools under a statewide district. And let's say they are starting to make gains a few years out. But do they, there's no specificity yet about how they go back to a district. And sometimes, one might make a case that, would you put them back in a district where the culture of learning isn't what one would like it to be? These are related issues, you know, how much influence you have, and some of it is culture. So, but these are really exciting in that sense. We'll be able to do things more with, well, with data, you know, and understand it. And then, do it in a fair way, as Sue's saying, so that you're not held responsible 20 years out, someone happened to go to institution X, and I'm not sure how much influence that had on their current effectiveness.
And then, that would be where we as staff would come in. And, you know, once we get the more sophisticated data systems in place, and we can do the kind of looking and tracking and analysis that we need to do, then yes, we would certainly come to the board with a different or revised way to do this, and, you know, ask for those revisions. So, we'll, we can continue to take a look at what we're doing now and see how that can be improved, you know, and so that it doesn't disadvantage anyone. At least, we didn't have that intent when we started this whole process. But, you know, when you're measuring smaller institutions, larger institutions, you may get some of that. You know, but again, we've been true to the process.
Right. And we don't have to wait for all of it at once. I mean, if, for instance, you, Flora, your staff, and the PSCT together kind of feel that, hey, there really is a new way to look at a given measure, we could bring and ask for consideration from the board of an amendment to this, you know, so that it would have that. Because like, what you're hearing Sue say is, given that the others were subject to that, that's why this appeal would have been inappropriate. But if there really is a better way to do this, we should consider that for the future measures and bring that change in. We don't have to wait for it all to be done at once. Because the data system will be out there a little ways.
Yeah, well, I'm sympathetic to the college where they say that their reputation may be damaged. But the whole purpose of this is to get them to be better, so that they, they'll have a good reputation. So, I know we struggle with this with other colleges as well. And they're working very hard to turn out well-prepared teachers. And some of them have students who are a little more difficult to achieve that with than others. And it seems unfair, but at the same time, they're working very hard. They will be producing good teachers. So, I think the college has to understand that this is sort of like parents telling this, it's for your own good kind of thing. But it is. I mean, the idea is to improve what they're doing so that they're all the students, regardless of how large or small it is, to, that all the students will be successful teachers. At least, that's the idea.
Yeah. Any further? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Continuing the Flora Show. Flora Jenkins Show. We have a presentation on the standards for preparation, and I'm not even going to go there.
Okay. I will see if I can.
Anishinaabe, Mowin. Language and culture. Actually, this is a really exciting issue also, because this gives us a chance to think about the board. We're successful in getting a foreign language requirement through the law. It doesn't kick in for a few years yet, I want to say 2016, is it?
16.
But there are many schools that are working with elementary and middle school kids now to have them ready before high school to have met that requirement. And whether it's sign language, or in this case, Native American languages, these are all other opportunities for kids to receive that credit. And in order to meet the needs of K-12 school districts' new endorsement standards for the preparation of teachers of these languages and cultures required. So, that's where we are. Sally and Flora, please.
So, these are the draft standards, and they're within the framework of all of the standards that we do for teachers of world languages. And they are the results of the Empress By Language and Curriculum Experts at the University of Michigan, and members of the Anishinaabe, Mowin. Am I close?
You're close. You're getting there.
I'm trying, I'm getting it. Incorporated. So, Flora, do you want to kind of walk us through?
Okay. And I'm going to try this myself, because I've been practicing it. And it is Anishinaabe, Mowin. So, that's, these are the draft standards for that particular endorsement. It is the tribal language of the Potawatomi, the Odawa, and the Ojibwe, which are tribes, Michigan tribes. There are 12 sovereign nations that fall into this language group. And so, we really are very interested in getting these, this endorsement out there. We need to have this review of the standards, so that we can get the endorsements in place. We do have some tribes that are teaching the language. As you know, the language is passed down through the ages. It's not a formalized type of language. And so, we have tribal elders who are very familiar with the language, can teach it. One of the problems that we've had is being able to get teachers who have come through a teacher preparation program with an endorsement, is because we have not had it, to go into those areas that really need to have this taught as a world language. And as Mike was saying yesterday, we can also consider these languages as part of the Michigan merit curriculum. So, it is important for us to have these types of endorsements out there. And we also, Dr. Bonnie Rockefeller is the person in my office who has worked probably over the last, I want to say, three or four years with the groups to come together to get these standards done. And, you know, that require getting tribal agreements between the various tribes to do this. And I think we have here with us Dr. Maria Kuligan, who's World Languages Teacher Education Project Director from the University of Michigan. Is she here? Okay, she was supposed to, I thought she was going to be here. So, at any rate, the standards that you see are set up pretty much like we do all of our standards that we bring to you, the world language standards. Where you see the standards, you will see the levels of proficiency, that are awareness, basic, comprehensive. And then, where you have the asterisk, it means that these are required. So, they don't really have a choice. These are program requirements. Also, Bonnie is working with the group to develop those, they're using a linguist and a tribal committee that will produce or come up with what exactly those kinds of proficiency levels are. So, that will be done. We're expecting to bring these back to the board for approval in December. We'll take them out for review, then we'll have to get that information back in and assimilate that, and then get them back to you. Right now, we're just presenting them to you. And so, once, you know, if you, if they go on the consent agenda this afternoon, I believe, then we will get them out for review.
So, that's pretty much the typical process. We present them to you first, then we take them out for public review, and then we'll bring them back after that public review. Any questions?
Well, in my draft here, it says it was coming back in October.
Yeah, I thought we were going to.
In October, it's not enough time. Yeah, we need more time. I talked to Bonnie about that this morning.
She goes too tight.
Mary Ann, did you have a?
I just wanted to say I'm very pleased we're doing this. All you had to say was that Bonnie was working on it. She's magnificent on all of this. And with regards to native languages specifically, I heard once that we lose one language at least every year, that it just falls by the wayside. And so, I think it's wonderful that we're doing what we can to preserve.
To preserve the culture. Any other questions?
Yeah, I had, a couple of years ago already, when you first started doing this, I was talking with some of the tribal leaders at some meeting I was at. And they were so excited, so happy that their language was being recognized and that they were going to be able to teach it to, that it'll be, their youngsters would learn it, and other people would know that there's a language. They were just delighted. So, I think it's, I agree with Mary Ann that it's, I'm glad we're doing it. I had a question on page 10, number 6.1. When it says guideline standard, I don't know if this is in all of our standards or not, but the first one is linguistic and cultural competence through reflective practices. How do you define reflective practices?
Reflective practices, and this is what we are hoping, you know, that all teachers are doing, is to take a look at what they're doing, use data from their students to say, you know, did I really teach this well to the students? Did they get it? You know, what is it about my practice that I can do to improve so that my students will learn this better? And so, that's a part of that, what we talk about in terms of reflective practice. It goes to professional development, building individual professional development plans. What are the areas you need to work on? So, you being honest about your practice.
Oh, that's good. Oh, that's good. And I like the one about the 6.4 with knowledge of the legislative impact, because I think most teachers have no idea what they're doing, has it affect on legislation, or vice versa? So I think that, that's a good one.
Yeah.
So, they're both good, actually.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, great, and this goes out for?
Yes, goes out for public review. Yeah, when you said that. Flora said that she talked to Bonnie this morning, she, they need, they're going to need more time, so we'll bring them back in December instead of October.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Flora.
Flora, you, you can actually even.
Take a breather now, right?
Take a breather, right. I'm sure Mary Alice is.
I don't think she's back yet.
She's, her husband has a, just some follow-up on a medical issue that she's with him this morning, so she'll, she'll be here as soon as she can.